Call the meeting to water, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors this evening and those that are watching. We started our meeting at eight o'clock this evening purposely because we had a long executive session, and I'm trying not to keep people waiting in the corridors while we complete our executive session, so thank you for your patience. First item on our agenda is minutes of September 8th, regular and executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September 8th, 2014, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining as I was not present.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
Four, zero, one. One abstention, Mr. O'Leary. Executive session of September 8th, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September 8th executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, discussion?
Again, I'll be abstaining, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
And we also have the minutes, regular session, September 15th.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September 15th, 2014, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? We also have the executive session of September 15th.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the September 15th executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? We have to approve the change of hours for package store licenses to align them with the current change in state law.
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the ABCC advisory issued September 8th, 2014, I move to approve the change of hours for 211 Lowell Street Corporation DBA Eastgate Liquors by changing the Sunday opening time to 10:00 a.m. to be effective October 23rd, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yule, Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, discussion? Mr. Frisco.
That's a state law now allowing that? Not, I know locally I thought we had the authority, but is that what you're saying? This is state?
That's correct. The state statute has changed effective October 22nd, I believe is the date, to allow a local licensing authority to permit package store license holders to open as early as 10:00 on Sundays.
Did we not grant the single license holder that authority recently?
I'm sorry?
Did we not grant the single license holder that authority recently?
I believe these are the first requests that I participated in the discussion.
That was establishments that had pouring on premise.
On premise, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
But we're not required to approve, we're not required to say yes.
I'm not aware, it certainly hasn't been tested with the ABCC at this point if a community were to elect not to approve it, but the statute allows the licensing authority to issue it.
Mr. Foye.
Mr. Libero, did they each apply for the, or are we automatically just doing it?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Did they each apply to have their hours?
They applied.
Okay, I didn't know if we were just doing it by virtual effect, they held license already.
No, no, the local licensing authority is required to submit a Form 43 to request that change to occur on a per license basis.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Appointments to the Youth Service-
We have more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, there's one for each, okay.
There's one for each, and we're gonna have some signing to do later on. Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the ABCC advisory issued September 8th, 2014, I move to approve the change of hours for One Stop Liquors Incorporated by changing the Sunday opening time to 10:00 a.m. to be effective October 23rd, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, any discussion? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the ABCC advisory issued September 8th, 2014, I move to approve the change of hours for RSS Convenience Inc., DBA Convenience Plus, by changing the Sunday opening time to 10:00 a.m. to be effective October 23rd, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, discussion?
That's at 7 Main Street.
No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Next.
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the ABCC advisory issued September 8th, 2014, I move to approve the change of hours for Shiva Enterprise Inc., DBA Christopher's Market by changing the Sunday opening time to 10:00 a.m. to be effective October 23rd, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, discussion?
Just by way of discussion, since I haven't done it on any of the other ones, but I'm in favor of this only because I don't want to place any of our local establishments at a disadvantage to other surrounding communities, and I think it's only fair that, my expectation is that other communities will be allowing their establishments to open at a time that was just judged by the ABCC to be okay, and I don't want to place our local businesses at any type of disadvantage.
Mr. O'Leary, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. I have one more, I think.
Not in my pile.
No, I guess you took them out of different order, okay.
Oh, there is one more.
Eastgate Liquors, uh, Liquors.
I thought we did Eastgate.
Did we do it? Okay, we did it all.
Uh...
Eastgate, One Stop.
211, yeah, I believe we, let's see, I think the first one we did was Eastgate, I'll just double check. ABCC, 211 Lowell Street Corp., DBA Eastgate, we did Eastgate, that was the first one.
Okay. Next, we have an appointment to Youth Services Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following name for an appointment to the Youth Services Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2016. Karen Buschemi, 3 Liberty Lane, North Reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule, do we have, how many openings do we have?
We'd have to get back to the board on that, I don't have that information offhand.
We have more than-
We do have more than one opening.
Okay, so I'll just waive the need for roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Just by way of explanation, Mr. Foye, there was another applicant, but he withdrew.
Correct.
Okay, I just thought we should go back through our Board of Selectmen's meeting schedule, we did this once, and there've been some conflicts and changes, so, starting with October 6th at 6:00 p.m., we'll be meeting, do we have a room?
We do, yes, it's the Administration Conference Room in the main office of the high school.
Of the new high school?
Correct.
What's it called again?
The Administration Conference Room.
Do you know about where that is?
It's, if you go in the, the entrance to the high school opposite the, the location is opposite the media center slash library.
Okay.
John, Bernard's Office, you know where-
Yes.
Principal Office, it's to the right of his office.
Yeah, no, I just, okay, so we do not have, at least in my calendar, we do not have another meeting scheduled, I'm sorry, we have a meeting on the 21st of October, it's a Tuesday, the 20th being a holiday, I think.
The 20th, I believe there was a conflict.
Conflict with me?
There was a conflict.
For a tennis.
Oh, okay, it was a conflict with you. So is everybody okay with the 20th, 21st rather, I'm sorry?
That's Tuesday?
Yes. Just want to confirm that.
One second, please. The date was what?
21st.
Yeah, I already had that in my schedule, 6:30 start?
Yeah, we've gone through this once, I'm going back through it again for-
Is that a 6:30 start or a 6?
That is a 7:00 p.m., but it may be a 6:00 p.m. depending on what-
6, thank you.
I've just scheduled as a regular meeting, we'll deal with what's on our agenda. Then we have a planning, a strategic planning meeting is on November, I'm sorry, where am I? October 29th.
Correct.
And that's going to be over at the Hillview Meeting Room?
That's correct.
And that's at 6:00 p.m.
I'll get that in too.
We have a Board of Selectmen's meeting at the 10th, and I am not going to be able to make it home from the West Coast until late that evening, so I'm wondering if the Board is interested in maybe meeting, the 11th is Veterans Day.
Right. 12th, that's good.
Meeting on the 12th or the 13th?
Either one.
Or have the meeting on the 10th, then Mr. Frisco can chair the meeting. One of the wishes of the Board at this point.
I'm flexible moving it, but any of that works for me, Mr. Chairman?
For the 12th? Mr. O'Leary?
That looks okay.
Okay.
That's a Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Sorry, we do have a request from the Finance Department that we have a series of bands and bonds that will come due, they would need to be signed no later than November 6th, we can attempt to try to slot them in for October 21st, there is an outside chance that the required paperwork just may not be required necessitating a meeting in between. I don't want to encourage the Board to schedule a meeting in between because I know there's a conflict for at least one person potentially-
Can we do it the 29th?
Can we post it for the 29th?
We could, we could do it then, I think we should have the information by then.
Okay, and if they're not, I mean, we could also schedule a brief meeting-
Yeah, right.
Some other evening, just to come in and do the signing.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so the next November meeting was tentatively scheduled for the 24th.
I'm sorry, are we doing the 12th? I apologize.
Yes.
Yes, moved it to the 12th.
Thank you.
And the November 24th, does that work for everybody?
It's parent-teacher conferences that night, just, I'm not sure, I mean, my wife will take care of it for me, but I'm not sure. She's been a single mother most of the time anyway.
So, no issue?
No fault.
No issues, okay. And then December meetings are scheduled for the 8th and the 22nd.
I'm sorry, what was the November when again? November 12th?
November 24th.
November 24th.
And then December 8th and 22nd.
I'll change it. 8th, I will be out of town. December 8th, I'm going to be out-
For the week or just a day?
Oh, the week, so, go ahead. Torture me, huh? Yeah. But I feel confident, I feel okay about leaving the clerk's job in good hands over here.
What day is that?
So the week of the 8th, I will not be available.
Week of the 8th, that's Monday, so, we're meeting on the 24th, and then the next Monday is the 1st of December, so I think if you don't object, then Mr. O'Leary will call the meeting on the 8th.
No, that's fine. Just don't take up anything that you don't want me to say.
I know you'll be scheduling things that you don't want me to comment on, but that's okay.
We'll work at it then.
We'll work at it then, okay.
And then the 22nd.
We will shorten the, shorten the week.
Which is the Christmas week.
What are you saying? Mr. Yule is inferring that the meetings are prolonged with my presence, I don't know.
Okay, and clearly, you know, as time goes on, we need to change one of the meetings in December, November, we'll do so.
Just that Wednesday meeting, is there anything else scheduled for this room on the 12th? I forget who-
November 12th.
I don't know who meets in here on Wednesdays, that's all.
Nothing that comes to mind, but we can check that and work with them to adjust the usage.
The only board is on Thursdays.
Thursday nights, yeah, I just didn't know.
In case you would think-
No, the conservation or-
If it's a conflict on Monday, next Monday night, we'll change it to Thursday.
Can I make a request on the December meeting? Is there a real need to have two meetings in December? And maybe to accommodate Mr. O'Leary as well, we just do one meeting on the 15th, that's it.
Why don't we make that decision as we get our last meeting in October?
Okay. License renewals, I wouldn't mind missing all those things.
Yeah.
Reappointments of license renewals, I mean, I hate missing those, but-
That's right, we usually need two meetings just to continue.
That's true, huh?
Yeah.
All right.
We'll look at, we'll look at what's on our agenda and go from there, Michael. Thank you.
Yes, I'm gonna have field meeting tomorrow that week, that's fine. I give Mr. meeting, that's okay.
All right, so next item on our agenda is review the October town meeting warrant articles and vote recommendations, and obviously we're going through this twice now, this is just to deal with the remaining open items.
Yeah, there's a handful of remaining.
And just to go through the presentation for-
Sure. And Mr. Chairman, I defer to you, I don't know if we want to take a couple of the articles out of order where we have people in the audience or-
Sure, let's do that.
Perhaps the one related to the request of the Historical Commission and then the bylaw request, we could do that.
Okay.
So I'll scroll through. Article 60. Mr. Chairman, Les Masters in the Historical Commission. So, we met with the trustees of trust funds last week, and they voted to give half the funds for the project, so 12,500. So what we have left is the 12,500 that we're looking to get from town meeting. I'm not sure how much you, you have to raise.
I, I don't know, I, I, the information was that, the instructions were to send the checks to the town.
Okay.
So, now I do understand that there is an issue with regard to who the check is written and now to, I did speak with the TA, and I said, just let the, whatever comes in-
Yeah.
Just let them come in and we'll deal with it at that point.
And we'll deal with that, yeah.
You know, that'd be the best way, hopefully, you know, something comes in.
So, right now, I'm not sure what the consensus of the Board is associated with supporting this article, so maybe we should discuss it. There were some questions, and there's, there are some remaining questions associated with the authority of the trustees of the funds to allocate those funds because we're missing some documents, legal documents associated with what we can and can't do, or what they can and can't do. So I think we need to vet that out, and then the Board has to come to some decision as to whether or not we're going to support using town funds for this project, because it's certainly, one, not necessarily on the top of our list, it wasn't vetted from a capital point of view, and in which case if we were going to put it into the capital plan, it would have to be vetted in the next capital budget, which would be, you know, put on the, on the warrant depending on what is recommended by the capital, the capital team associated with what's available for funds and what the priorities are. So I think we need to vet all of this out, I know that Mr. Dallas has wanted to speak on the issue, I understand he was a dissenting voter on the, on the trustees associated with that as a minority, but he had some information that he might have garnered that, you know, might provide the Board with at least some additional information on the legality of what was done. We're not saying anyone did anything illegal, it's just that there wasn't the appropriate, we seem to have lost some historic documents associated with the, with the trust fund, so, but please speak to your cause in terms of what you're attempting to do.
Oh, like I said-
There was also one other question.
Yeah.
And I think you did, the town administrator did provide some information on the cost of insurance.
Yes, but again, so, Mr. Chairman, if I, just for a couple of moments to answer some of the questions that I know have been brought up, the first is, I think that there were more procedural questions from at least one member of the Trust Fund Committee to make sure that everything was in order with regard to the circumstance that we were in. I know that counsel has come back with an opinion to say that broadly he believes that the Trust Fund Committee has the authority to disperse the funding as it was requested to do so by the Historical Commission, but that to comply, to ensure compliance with the statute, that such an approval would need to be ratified by the Board of Selectmen and approved by the Board of Selectmen at some point in order for that funding to be released. So that first $12,500, assuming that all the questions that are, might be remaining are answered by at least one member of the committee, then we would, then this Board would need to approve for that funding to be in place. The second piece I'll identify is, to date I've been provided information that the Fine Arts Insurance Rider coverage we would need to provide is approximately $200,000, but my gather from informal discussions that that $200,000 might reflect the totality of the inventory in, in the possession of the firm in Rhode Island. So, once I'm provided a more updated number, I can request a more updated premium cost. I would note, I think it's important to note, that that would be a recurring cost annually that would need to be absorbed in the town's insurance budget.
Just that, my understanding on that was the $200,000 was the cost of the, of the dig, it wasn't necessarily the value of the artifacts.
Right, so it's-
It was just the cost associated with what it took to find everything, and that's how they came up with the number. And that's what I was kind of wrestling with, you know, whatever you're, you're going to be displaying certainly doesn't have that kind of value.
And to close, to further round out that conversation, we would then, once provided an inventory, be requested by our insurer to get an appraisal of it, to get a firm number of whatever its value is.
Right.
So that's the way that I would envision it would work out. I did have a premium cost that identified that ranged depending upon the deductible associated with it, but when we're provided more detailed information, we can certainly update, update that. But again, I would note it is going to be recurring cost to insure the, the items. I think that that's the extent of the information that I wanted to offer with regard to that article.
Okay, so town council has made a ruling that was within authority of the trustees?
Broadly, he has stated that he believes that the Trust Fund Commission, Committee can approve the funding to be dispersed for this type of request based on the information at hand, however, that it would need to also be approved by the Board of Selectmen to ensure compliance with the state statute.
Okay. Anything else, there's a couple other people wanting to speak.
No.
Mr. Kaufman and then Mrs. Romeo.
I do have a question with you.
I'm sorry?
I do, I do have a question to follow up, so we don't, I didn't notice, do we have a motion for that?
Not this evening, it was not on the agenda.
Okay.
Good evening, and thank you, thank you for your service. I have three points to make tonight, all of which offer new information.
Could you just identify yourself for the-
Dallas Kaufman, 24 Haverhill Street, North Reading.
And are you speaking as a member of the trustees or a private-
I'm speaking in, on the, I think I'm speaking on the first point as a member of the trustee of trust funds, on the last two points, I'm speaking as a resident of North Reading. And I'll, I'll break and let you know when that change happens.
Shake your hat, tie or something.
Yeah, a little bit over my shoulder here. My first point is to share new information that has recently surfaced concerning the governing document that the trustees of trust funds rely upon. My second point is to share new information about the other alternatives that are available that may affect how the Board of Selectmen and later the public decide to vote on this matter. Finally, my third point is to request input from the leaders in our school system and school department. First, concerning the trustee of trust funds, I was appointed to the trustee of, as, as a trustee of trust funds, one of three, earlier this year. We met last Wednesday for the second time, and to hear about and vote on the Historical Commission's proposal. I abstained from voting on the Historical Commission's proposal because at the time we did not have any governing documents for any of the trusts that are under our discretion, nothing. We had, well, without governing documents, I don't know if we're empowered to disperse funds for any purpose. The only thing we have to support our decisions is a collection of unsigned thumbnail descriptions of what each fund is supposed to provide for. We don't know who the author of this document is or when it was written. I have a copy of it in my file if you'd care to see it. I requested guidance last week by submitting six questions to my fellow co-trustees and to town treasurer. Up until last Friday, we have been under the impression that we were working with the Walter S. Flint Fund. Last Friday, the will of Walter S. Flint was made available to us by town treasurer. I also obtained a copy from Mr. Flint's estate file at Essex Probate Court and verified that no separate trust document was on file there. Thus, the only governing document that exists is Mr. Flint's will. I have a copy of that here as well, if you'd like to see it. Upon my review of that will, I discovered that Mr. Flint's bequest of $10,000 to the town of North Reading, very long time ago, I believe it was 1963, was to be known as the Walter S. Flint School Fund. So now we know that at some point the word "school" was omitted from the description of this fund, I think that's very important. The full paragraph 17 of his will that created this fund reads, and I quote, "To the town of North Reading, Massachusetts, the sum of $10,000 to be known as the Walter S. Flint School Fund, the income thereof to be used for anything for the entertainment, education, health, or other benefits of the children of the public in high schools of North Reading. It is clear to me that Mr. Flint wanted this money to directly benefit the entertainment, education, health, and other benefits of the children of our public in high schools." Mr. Flint didn't leave this money to the Historical Commission or to the Flint Memorial Library. Butressing this point, Mr. Flint provided separately for the Flint Memorial Library in paragraph 19 of his will, that paragraph reads, "To the Flint Memorial Library of my native town, North Reading, Massachusetts, I give and bequeath the sum of $3,000. I've read Mr. Flint's will in its entirety, he didn't leave a bequest to our Historical Commission. Sadly, thus I'm very skeptical of the Historical Commission's request, if the Historical Commission's request falls within the four corners of this trust fund. I don't know if my co-trustees, Jeff Simons and Marcy Bailey, want to reconsider their vote to approve 12,500, subject to town council's opinion that such a grant would be permissible," which now we have a broad answer to. "We ask town council for an opinion, but I'm not sure if town council is aware that the correct name of this fund includes the word 'school.'" Do, do we know that?
We'd have to verify that within the documentation that he had to review.
Thank you. This morning, town council responded and wants to ensure compliance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53a. That law says, among other things, that the school committee's approval is required for us to expend these funds. I've got a copy of that law for the Board if you'd like to see that. In any event, it's now clear that the trustee of trust funds need the consent of the school committee or the Board of Selectmen or both before we can approve this request. Changing hats, gentlemen, ladies. My second point concerns the information, new information received that concerns the Historical Commission's request for $25,000 for the interpretive display at the library. We've recently learned that that request for $25,000 is broken down as follows. Personnel costs, including design, installation, editing, et cetera, $15,167. Consulting costs for a display designer, $2,000. In my world, those are called soft costs, as soon as you write the check, that money is gone. Display equipment, including the case, delivery, and installation, $7,000. Thus, after the proposed case is delivered, the real hardware will be worth something less than $7,000, perhaps significantly less, since it will then be a used piece of furniture. What will it be worth after the installers walk out the door? The vendor-selected Public Archaeological Laboratory, otherwise known as PAL, also offers two programs. These are the folks that wrote the proposal for the case. They offer school programs where they provide artifacts from a variety of digs, including the former J.T. Berry property in North Reading, geared towards several age bands, elementary, middle, and high school students. These interactive and entertaining programs are available free of charge to any public school system in the area, and include stone-making demonstrations, classroom slide presentations, and hands-on demonstrations. They are among the most popular programs sponsored by- They are among the most popular programs sponsored by PAL. They also offer similar programs tailored to all ages, including college and adult community education programs, workshops, lectures, and field activities. Funding for these programs is provided by state and local grant programs. I didn't know this until a few days ago. PAL partners with many large corporations, including National Grid, with whom they have a longstanding relationship. Thus, we have some incredible opportunities available to us, providing live, interactive demonstrations and the ability to have hands-on experience with real artifacts at no cost to anyone. It would be nice for North Reading to get back something from National Grid. While I believe wholeheartedly in the mission of the Historical Commission, I'm a history buff myself, I don't think that allocating $25,000 to this particular cause ranks very high on our priority list. I think that we, as a community, have needs that are much greater than the proposed display case. If the display case is funded, we will be spending $25,000 for a piece of furniture that costs $7,000 or less to make, deliver and install. After installation, we'll have a piece of used furniture. The Historical Commission has asked the trustee of trust funds for $25,000, and they will ask the voters for it if the trustees don't approve it. Thus far, no organic funds have been raised. Excuse me, Mr. Yell. Perhaps, I'm not sure if your funds are organic or how much they are, but you're the exception.
This is all natural.
Yell. Contrast this with the fine work of the Minutemen Militia, who can build an entire farm museum and do incredibly, other incredible and historically significant work, all with organic fundraising. A case such as this has limited appeal, and by the Historic Commission's description, a book about our artifacts would be, quote, "best enjoyed by archaeologists," end quote. And an extensive report would be, quote, "geared to the professional archaeologists," end quote. The school programs and other programs offered free of charge by PAL seem to me to have much greater appeal. I don't know why the Historical Commission didn't mention them. If the case is funded, it will require additional insurance premiums by the town in all future years. I inquired whether the Historical Commission could perhaps have students at the high school develop a website to showcase with worldwide access, complete with 3D video, 24/7 availability, zero insurance cost, zero space at the library, and little or no cost to the town. The Historical Commission did not respond favorably to that idea of developing a website. For these reasons, I asked the selectmen not to recommend a vote for this proposal. Certainly, we can find a greater use for $25,000. My third and last point is to ask our school administrators, especially athletics and arts department heads, our school committee, and our youth services director, to please give us their input and ideas for the Walter S. Flint School Fund. Over the years, that fund has accumulated about $35,000 that is eligible to disperse, and we would love to hear some great ideas about what to do with it. Six months ago, I had never heard of trustee of trust funds. In fact, I looked kind of bewildered when I heard the term for the first time. In fact, I had no idea what was involved. I've since discovered that hardly anyone is aware that we have these funds available. That lack of information doesn't do anyone much good, so I think we should make the existence of these various funds known to our community leaders, especially the administration and department heads of the schools, so that we might entertain proposals to fund worthy projects in the future. It's not as though we have all 35, we have to award all $35,000 at once. My wish is that our school leaders submit several projects that we could evaluate, prioritize, and consider funding in the years ahead. In addition to the Walter S. Flint School Fund, we have a short list of other funds that are available to benefit the community in several ways. Promoting the existence of these funds is the best way to make worthy projects come to life. We don't have to make our decision now. These artifacts have been around for 8,000 to 11,000 years. My guess is that they'll still be around at a future time when perhaps our town finances are in better shape. In the meantime, we should seek other ideas and opinions. Besides, while we're seeking new ideas, we can see and touch our artifacts for free. The process of awarding these funds should be as open as this meeting. Right now, we have only one proposal before it, before us, and I don't think it fits. Even if I'm 100% wrong, and it does fit, it still is only one idea. We need to open this up to the rest of the schools and community as a whole to come up with some great ideas that need funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a copy of the general law if you'd like to preview that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's right there. Fell on the table.
Mrs. Romeo?
Well, I was going to say that after being held hostage ever since we first proposed some money from the trust funds and being told that they couldn't really discuss it because they didn't have any paperwork, and, and until we brought some paperwork, then we could perhaps discuss this. And I felt that perhaps they could do the same thing that anybody else would do, and that would be to research it. So I'm very delighted that they did do some research and find some paperwork, and that would be to go online or co-visit the proper sources and find a will. So I'm glad that they did find a will, and it is what I thought it might be. And Mr. Flint did leave it. I didn't know about the word "school." But that seems to be appropriate because when I was on the trustees, we did indeed fund band uniforms for the high school to the tune of 20-something thousand dollars. People were aware of that. It wasn't a secret. We also funded a kiln for the art department. They seemed to know about that. It wasn't kept secret. People came and asked for it. So those people were not kept in the dark about what would be available to the schools, as you say, in the, in your snide comments. So, thank you very much for that. I'm disappointed in that, in those comments. From, from your remarks, I, I kind of think, from your description of all of it, and you seem, seem to say that it's not, that the will is not pointed to the Historic Commission. Well, surely it's not, because we're not doing this for a Historical Commission. We're actually doing it for school-age children, right up to high school, or even college, and I still consider that to be kids. This is, this is not for anybody else but that age group to light a fire into people that want to study more about who lived here, who came through North Reading, who lived here before the people that we can readily imagine in, in the, the near past. That's what we want, to, to light a fire in someone's mind and say, "I want to go on and study more about this. I want to know who came before us." That's what we want to, to portray for the people that live here now. And I don't think that's too much money to spend to show that. And we're not talking about a $7,000 case, a piece of furniture, not just a piece of furniture. We're talking about the research that goes into it, about a really fine display, everything that goes with it. It's not just the, the nuts and bolts. It's how you present that. It's all the work that goes into that. Oh, sure, it can wait. It can go sit in dusty boxes in a basement, in a facility, somewhere else in Rhode Island. It can sit there and be forgotten until we're all dead and buried. And we'll forget about it, and several hundred years from now, someone would say, "Hey, did you know, eons ago, they dug up all these things in North Reading?" Think about that. Why did they forget about it? Why did they leave it behind? That's the attitude. Well, they had more important things to do. They had to renovate some offices. They had to build another building. They had to do something else. They've always had to do something else. Always. For the last 50-something years that I've lived here, we've always had to do something else. We've always needed money. We've always had to build something. We've always had to fix something. We've always had taxes going up. We've always been in a financial mess, but we've never had time to do something nice for the town. Some little thing. What is $25,000 compared to the other things that we've wasted money on? One of the things that we funded out of trust funds were beautiful new windows for the bachelor school wing, as we affectionately used to call it in the old days, the shoebox. Well, what happened to the shoebox? Steve, you remember the shoebox. What happened to it? It's gone, and not too long after we paid a lot of money out of one of the trust funds, and I'm thinking it's the Walter S. Flint Fund, because that qualified for a school fund, that money went into windows because the kids were freezing in the classrooms. So we put money into that. Hmm. Now, it went into the dumpsters. So, that was so much for the school fund. So, all I'm saying is that we preserve a little bit of what had been this territory and display it, so that we might encourage somebody to think about what went before us and learn some more about this earth and who came before, and hopefully forget the snide comments that you heard tonight.
Any other comments from the audience regarding this article? Board members?
Yeah, I think many times we always come across a situation, almost at every meeting, where we have to make a decision on whether we want to spend money on something we want to have versus something we need to have. And sometimes that's subjective, and it's very hard and difficult and seat squirming to make a decision. And this is no, no exception. I think the, the concept and the idea is a very, very good idea, and that's why I decided to do whatever I could to run a road race and raise some money, and hopefully anybody who's listening will remember that I did that, and they will send in some checks, because that would be very, very nice. And that would be helpful. I, I just need to get some clarification on what Mr. Kaufman said. And I said, I think his point in quoting the term "school" a couple times was meant to emphasize that that's what, that's what the fund is for. And so, I, I think that, that was his purpose. So it seems to me that these funds really have to be distributed through the school and confirmed by the Board of Selectmen before those funds can be received. Am I understanding that correctly? Accept, accepting counsel correction.
I think Mr. Kaufman's interpretation is based on the will, is that the school committee has to approve a transfer, and then there's, one step further, it appears that based on what town council has said, that the board has to approve it also. And I think what would, whether you, the four corners of what this fund was for, I think, you know, a display in the library is educational, and they're far probably, spending the money for that purpose probably still fits within the wishes of Mr. Flint.
I had that thought, thought, thought in my mind.
So it's just a matter of approvals that is being questioned now as to who has to approve it, above and beyond the recommendations of the trustees of the trust funds.
Okay. So, so in other words, it still has to go through the school?
Right. But I think the matter, the matter before us here is, there's an article at town meeting, and as we usually do, and it's a request for funds, I gather, how much I'm not sure at this point, that one, is if there is a request of town's funds, what is the source of the fund, and is the board going to recommend or not recommend it? So, I mean, we could, you know, I think we've heard two sides of the situation. I think there's still some questions associated with, you know, who, who should be, what's needed in the process of approval. And there's also the, the issue of funding, it would have to be, and I think we are making some adjustments, we have an article to make adjustments to the existing town budget, so we'd have to also fund the additional insurance money if we were to go forward with it. That's my understanding, although we don't even know what that is, because there's some question as to how that's been arrived. At this point, I'm not in support of this at this time because of all the uncertainties. Town meeting is in October, and I think, you know, if we were going to re, if we were truly interested in moving, supporting this based on what the Historical Commission wants to do, I would suggest that we defer it until June, town meeting, and deal with it as a fiscal 2016, 15, 16 budget. The other issue is that, you know, we, we have this capital planning committee, and, you know, what does this fit?
Right.
As a $25,000, you know, if it is deferred, is a $25,000 expenditure, even though Mr. Kaufman has broken it into, you know, there's a fair amount of it, this consulting fees, how would our capital planning committee look at this? Is a $25,000 expenditure for capital?
I think it'd look at as a project. It's a single item.
Single item project. So it would need to be vetted through the capital committee, associated with everybody else's desire for, and needs for capital improvements in one form or another. So, at this point, I personally can't support a request for any funds.
Sure, just one question on it being a capital item, or a capital request from, typically, the town administrator will send out a communication to department heads on capital requests, so this is, he'd have to communicate with, with the Historical Commission, make sure that they're aware of the timeframe for submitting.
Yes.
So, I just want to make sure. And then, at that point, do we open it up to other committees and throughout, our commissions throughout the town who want to buy for expenses also, that's all?
Well, just to continue, I, I think your suggestion for a June town meeting is, is appropriate at this time, because it, it, things can happen between now and then, and hopefully, some funds can be raised. Mr. Kaufman brought up the, what they did at the, what do you call it, the-
Minutemen Militia.
Minutemen Militia did. And they raised, they went out and they worked hard and they raised some money there, and they could have, but did not come to town asking for funds, which, again, this is a display of a greater magnitude and size of, and it's educational for the town, so, and they went out and they, they earned that. And I, I do feel, I'm a strong believer in philanthropic support of programs like this, so I, I think- So I think going back, pushing it back to a June meeting. And if the funds are a minimal amount, then maybe we can, you know, work something out there.
Well, it does give ample additional time to raise private funds
Yes.
for the project. And also to perhaps pursue some of the programs that Mr. Kaufman alluded to that might be a better solution than providing this kind of educational display of these types of artifacts to our schoolchildren, you know, for a lot less money. In fact, for no cost at all or minimal cost.
And yes, I'll be willing to do another race, you know, to raise some funds. Not tomorrow, recovering. But, you know, I'd be willing to do that down the road a piece to help raise funds again. So, you know, I think your suggestion for June is a good one.
Yes, anyone else? Well, we need a recommendation as to whether we're going to recommend to, recommend this article, not recommend it, pass it over? What are the wishes of the board at this point?
I do want to comment. I want to embrace the concept and idea that's being proposed under this article. I think it's, as Mrs. Romeo pointed out, sometimes we have a tendency to set things aside. And while it may not be an overall priority for everybody in the community, there are all sorts of things throughout the community and displays that we have that other people have put together which are of benefit. And I think this is part of the history of North Reading, obviously. I mean, the artifacts where we cover here in North Reading. And as Pat pointed out, eight thousand years ago or more. And I think we should avail ourselves of an opportunity to have a display here. And I think, you know, Mr. Kaufman's point in his research in relation to what this organization does, we should take advantage of that, obviously, of those programs. But I think a permanent display, you know, in the library is certainly educational for our school system as well as the community as a whole. And it's up to the trustees of the trust fund to see if that fits. It would appear to me on the surface that it does, you know, as far as educational and for the school purposes, even though it's not, may not be physically located in the school. But that's for someone else to decide, maybe Town Council. You know, to me, this is a, this becomes a priority. And again, things pop up, you know. And as far as a capital plan, I never considered this, just because of the dollar amount, as being a capital project. Again, most of the funding is going to be going towards appropriately displaying. And from what I understand, it was from the last presentation, actually, display material to be handed out and available or initial publication be handed out at the place where the artifacts are going to be displayed. So there's printing costs associated with that, too. Correct me if I'm wrong.
The initial print, they're going to create the handouts, one for adult, one for school age children. And we'll get an initial amount of handout.
Right. So that's included in the?
But we will then own rights to reproduce them.
Right.
So we own those documents. It's not like we have to go back and buy them from them again. So as many as we ever need, we can continue to produce them.
So I don't see it as fitting the, because it's broken into pieces. It really wouldn't necessarily come under capital. Dollar amount is $25,000 for the, but it's printing, there's displays, there's the cases, most of the things, the consulting services associated with it. And for the Historical Commission to have to go through that process for proposals such as this, I don't necessarily think it fits. That's just my opinion. So, you know, I embrace it. I think it's a good idea. I certainly would like to see, you know, more private funds raised for it. But I think it's an investment that, as a community, we should be making. If we have an opportunity to display something that did occur here, a really important historical finding, why not take advantage of it for future generations to enjoy? Yeah. You know, as far as, you know, waiting until the Town finances get better. I mean, I've been at this like you forty-one years. I've never seen it any better or any worse necessarily. There's always challenges and there's always, I don't ever recall the community being flush with cash. And, you know, what we do is we sit here and we make some decisions and make some choices. And I think, you know, this is an appropriate thing to come before us for consideration, and I'm ready to make a positive choice for it. So, that being said, we'll decide on the timing of it.
Well, we have Town Meeting coming up in a week. Right. If I understand it correctly, they have a commitment of $12,500 from the trusts. I don't know if they've raised any of that money.
How much from the trust?
$12,500.
So we need to come to a, we need to come to some decision as to, one, are we going to recommend? What are we going to recommend or not recommend? And we also have to adjust the insurance budget accordingly.
And I think that's going to be peanuts.
Well, it's not peanuts. It's $1,000.
That's if you're going to ensure the total $200,000 value of what the whole dig cost, you know. I mean, I questioned that a couple of weeks ago.
We don't have, there's a requirement somewhere, right? I mean, to me, right now, we don't even have all the facts together to make a decision. So if the consensus of the board is to go forward with this, then we still have some work to do to make sure that everything is appropriately taken care of at Town Meeting, which is a week away.
I just wanted to clarify something about the location of the artifacts, where we wanted to place them. We thought about putting them in a school. The schools don't fit what the state wants. It fits that they're open, but they're only open five days a week, standard. Unless you go, you know, go to the high school. The high school, if you're playing basketball season, it's open every day, every night. But it has to be in a secure location. And that's a library. A library is open five, five and a half days, except for in the summertime, three nights a week. So it fits the requirement that the state, that asks if you're going to have these artifacts, that they're available to the public.
Chris, my sense is that there's no issue with the library.
No, 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 but people have asked.
And I don't think there's even an issue associated with the fact that the Flint Fund said education.
Schools, yeah.
Schools. I think it all ties together. I don't think that's the issue at all.
Right. Right. We would have put it in the school. But it doesn't, it doesn't fit within what the state wants. You know, it would be great. I mean, the other things, having Powell come up and do demonstrations and things are great. But they're going to do a very small population of our 2,000-plus students. The library is available to all of those students, plus other students that, oh geez, they go to St. John's. They go here, they go there, they go other places. They still live in North Reading. And it'd be nice that they knew, you know, what happened here eight, 10,000 years ago or more.
Mr. Priscilla?
I'm definitely in favor of the idea. I just think that maybe we're a little bit ahead of ourselves on this one, because we only have four business days before we're at October Town Meeting. And we want to do this right. And I think it's wonderful that we're able to come up with the $12,500 from the trust funds, once we get that confirmed. But without pushing it off, and I'm going to suggest that we push it off until June Town Meeting. I know you may not like that idea. But I just think, like Mr. Misery had mentioned earlier, I think there's just a few other things that we need to get worked out in regards to the insurances. And maybe we just haven't done a full due diligence on all the funding and where we could have some savings. But I would be fully committed to supporting this other money, whatever we know what it, we have to figure out what exactly that is between now and June Town Meeting. I don't think we're going to have this figured out in the next four business days. I don't know if anyone else feels, but I would support this article in June Town Meeting. And I agree with Mr. Olary in regards to the CIP. When you really break this whole thing down, I'm not sure it really quite fits in the CIP. But, you know, Mr. Foti is the real smart one on our committee that knows this CIP stuff. So I would leave it up to his recommendation. But that's how I feel. I would ask the board to pass over and definitely support this article in June. And we take this time now, over the next several months, to gather all the information we need so we can lock this down. Because I, Mrs. Romeo, I appreciate all the effort you put in this. And I think it is a wonderful thing for the Town. But when we're all along gone, it should be displayed. But we have to do it in a reasonable manner, in an affordable manner, and make sure we fully understand all the costs associated with it.
Mr. Kaufman?
I just want to repeat one point that I think bears, deserves repeating. And that is, the email that I received this morning from T.A. Gilberto, I believe, referenced Town Council's opinion. And Town Council cited this law, whereupon I just, I'm a bit of a frustrated lawyer. I like researching that sort of stuff. So I punched it up. And it says to me clearly that school committee approval is required. Now, maybe we can get that, but I think that needs to be answered as well. Thank you.
Mr. Gilberto?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of points to just inform the discussions. First is, and I know Mr. Keller here, Selectman Foti is here as well. I believe the deadline for filing a request for consideration of the capital improvement program was today for the June Town Meeting. That doesn't mean that it could not necessarily receive consideration under the capital program. But I just feel it's important to note that. The second thing is that with regard to the documentation relative to the estate and bequests of Mr. Flint, there are at least two funds that have been given to the Town that I'm aware of, and perhaps more. One is designated for the Flint Library. The other is, seems, appears is designated for schools. I think when it comes to the issues of authority and where the authority lies, we really need to get all of the information, including what the gentleman has identified in front of Town Council to make that determination. I certainly understand what's being represented with regard to the potential input of the school committee. But I think we need to get that information to Town Council for an answer. Thank you.
Mr. Foti?
I just got a comment on the, whether it's a capital project or deeds and all that. And I don't, and Mr. Keller concernedly correct me. I don't think today was a hard deadline. I mean, I think we would be okay with. And as far as whether we consider a capital project, I think that's kind of what we would be put before the committee itself and let the committee make that decision as a whole, as opposed to taking any one of our opinions. I think that's why we have the CIPC. I think it's, you submit something, you take a look at it. And if it meets the criteria, then it goes forward to decide whether it's something we want to accept this year, next year, or the following year. So I wouldn't discourage the Historical Commission from submitting a request to the Capital Improvement Committee. And again, as far as the deadline goes, I don't think we would, I don't, we don't have a, we don't have a meeting scheduled anytime soon. So I don't think.
That's correct.
If we didn't request it from the committee, then I think getting it afterwards is not a problem.
Okay.
If we had submitted, requested it and they didn't respond, it's a different story. But I don't think we polled them on this topic.
That's correct.
So what are the wishes of the board at this time? We can make a final decision in our next meeting? We can move to pass over? We can move to recommend?
Mr. Olary is coming.
Mr. Olary?
I, just in listening to my fellow board members, there seems to be a consensus to support the effort. So there appears to be support, majority support, to support the effort. I don't know if that's with or without the trust funds. But, you know, my anticipation is, you know, you get the opinion from Town Council. To me, I don't see why we couldn't proceed at October Town Meeting. Doesn't mean we have to spend the money. October or June, you know? If we're in favor of doing it, we're in favor of doing it. We don't have to expend the money. All that is, is giving us authorization to do so. And if there's some hurdle that comes in the way of doing it appropriately, then there's a hurdle in the way, and we don't spend the funds. We get it corrected in June. But if there isn't any hurdles, then we can proceed. Yeah, so, you know, whether we're in favor in October or in favor in June, I don't believe my position is going to change. It doesn't appear as though the majority of the board's position is going to change either. But I would just caution the Historical Commission that if we were to proceed in support of this, there would be some caveats. You know, the school committee would have to give its approval. It would be subject to our approval, obviously. But, and then depending upon the insurance, again, I think it's absurd, the dollar amount that was put forth. But it was $1,000 to cover $200,000 worth of stuff. The $200,000 was the entire collection. It wasn't a few artifacts that come into North Reading.
Well, I mean, what, exactly what I'm concerned about is, and why I suggested that we hold off, is that we have all these loose items here. We don't know what it's going to cost to insure it. We have a mandate from the state or whoever is in possession of this to do something. We don't have that fully vetted. We don't know whether or not the amount that the trustees have voted to present has been done appropriately. And we don't, right now, know what the source of funds would be for the additional money required. So if we're going to have an Article at Town Meeting on the basis of approving this, right, it's got to be based on something. So, you know, if you want to approve the entire amount of $25,000, take it out of free cash, which then creates, you know, my concern about where we're going to be at the end of the winter, fine. And allocate some additional money to the insurance budget, you know, based on the current estimates. You don't have to spend it all, you're right. But that's what you'd have to do to assure that this thing would go off. Or you can put part of the money in and say, well, if they don't have the rest of the money, it'll have to wait. I mean, we've got to make a decision, one way or the other. You just can't say, well, we're going to approve this or not. Yes, ma'am?
Stone J.C., I sent an email today to Brona Simon. She's a state archaeologist, asking her about the insurance. So I didn't, I couldn't figure a way of taking the $200,000 and prorating it. You know, I couldn't figure out what you divide it by to come up with some figure. I pushed Dr. Doucette to come up with some dollar amount, and that's what she came up with. So I've gone to the state archaeologist to ask her for some guidance. So I'm hoping to hear from her within the next few days, if that's any help.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Yul?
I guess the question is, when great ideas like this come before us, we have to compare them to other decisions that we would or would not make. The question that I have is that if the Minute Militia had come forward to us with their farm museum and asked for money, would we be approving that type of, would we be consistent in our process in approving funds for the farm that, music, farm museum that they put up? Or if the Fourth of July Committee were to come forward and ask for funds? So I guess that, you know, we have to be consistent in our approach, rather than be random and say, well, I like this one, but I don't like that one, and so on. It does need to be a form of continuity. So my question really is, is that would we be consistent in this going forward for if someone came up, again, like the men with the farm museum? Would we have, would we have been, would we be giving the funds for that?
Hadn't been asked.
Hadn't been asked, right. Well, I know you haven't been asked. But you can, you know, to yourself.
I think every project that's come forth, every article that's presented, is reviewed by the board based on its merits and based on our fiduciary responsibilities in terms of what's available in the budget. And, you know, we carefully weigh these things. And there is a, there is a significant level of judgment, I am sure. And at this point, my biggest concern is there are too many things that are unknown at this point, that's all.
And I would never assure you that this board will remain consistent in their actions or their, no, it changes. It doesn't. I can assure you of that.
There's a due process that we have to consider.
Well, I think, I think we've heard, we've heard from Mr. Kaufman, we've heard from Mrs. Romeo, who's very passionate, you know, about this project. And she has for many of the things in Historic District. She has a long history of this. And I think we're at a point where, I don't think the board disagrees with what's being proposed. It's just that there's too many loose ends. It's just that there's too many loose ends at this point. And time will resolve those loose ends, whether it's fully funded from the outside, or whether it's fully funded from the town, and what we have to really put up for insurance. So, Mr. O'Leary's proposed finding a way of saying, "Let's go forward with it and put some money aside," or something, and if it fits, if we can pull it all together downstream, it's done. And the chair has proposed holding off until June town meeting, when we have all this information. And I say June, not that I'm saying it's going to require all that time, but that's the next town meeting. And I'm not anxious to schedule a special town meeting for this or anything else at this point, right? So, I'm saying...
How about if we get a consensus from the Historical Commission? At this point, based upon the conversations that you've heard, would you consider it reasonable or unreasonable to move forward? If we didn't move forward, you consider that to be unreasonable?
I think the June town meeting, just myself, is a good compromise.
That works, then.
By the rest of the board.
As disappointing as it might be.
It is a compromise, but...
Are you pointing at me?
You and I know. That all of the things that have been accomplished in the center of town, I can't say all of them.
Virtually all of them.
A good majority of them.
Virtually all of them.
Have succeeded and are standing and are successful because they have been done on a wish and a prayer, and with all of those loose ends hanging out when we went forward. You know that.
I know that. So, we have, so we have a good compromise.
And we did it this way.
So, June meeting.
Well, Chris?
Chris, sorry.
I keep hearing the Minutet Militia and their, the new barn they just built. They're a private entity. The Historical Commission is part of the town, and it's our, it's our job to protect the historic nature of the town, and collect documents and things of that nature. So, we're talking about two different things. The Minutet Militia do also protect and display and all kind of antique and historic things. They're privately owned, they're owned by, somebody owns those pieces of equipment. Either the Historic Antiquarian Society owns them by donation, or the gentlemen, the Minutet Militian own them by donation, or the gentlemen themselves own that, those pieces of equipment themselves.
And there are some on loan that were displayed on loan?
Exactly, exactly. This is a little different in that, first of all, it belongs to the state, the state owns them. They're housed at PAL in Rhode Island. We're allowed to, if we do, we jump through all their hoops and provide everything we need to, we can have permanent custody of the artifacts for our, the general population to see, because right now, you can't see them. You know, it's the same, there's a few up at Phillips Academy, they're in boxes in the basement there also. You'd have to, like, give them probably a month or so time for them to find them if they can.
But, Chris, the argument here, the board, I think, if I'm reading everybody right, is not against this.
Right, no, no.
It's the reality of, how do we make it happen from a practical point of view, with and do it appropriately?
I understand this sincerity, but what I just keep hearing, the Minutet Militia being brought up in the amount of money...
Not from...
No, I understand, but it's been mentioned three or four times tonight by a couple of different people. That was, those are private entities raising funds to do a private, basically, it's a private museum that's open to the public, and it's free. And, you know, the Antiquarian Society leased the property from the town for a dollar a year, I believe. So, it's, you know, it's kind of a collaborative. But it's, we're a little bit different. We don't normally raise money, but to, you know, look for it from the town, from what we do as a commission. Okay? Thank you.
And as far as June goes?
Yeah, it is a compromise, but I'd rather have everyone on the board behind it in June than folks with questions for loose ends.
All right, so we spent a lot of time on this, I may ask the board, is it fair for our recommendation to pass over this article?
Yes.
Then I will entertain a motion.
Sure.
In the meantime, Jeff can run the Boston Marathon.
Mr. Fody, are you making the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Yule, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananous. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilberto, want to go through those remaining articles?
Democracy.
We could take the, I believe it's the next article, sorry, Article 18, the police chief is here.
Yes.
With regard to that article.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Back on September 15th, that came before you regarding this article. And at that time, the Applied Geographics was putting together a map, which included the bus stops. I wanted to just give a brief overview, just to remind the board of what the article actually is for. I'm going to skip through a few slides, but the intention of this bylaw is to create residency restrictions for individuals finally classified as a Level 3 sex offender by the Sex Offender Registry Board. If anybody has any questions on the definitions, I'd surely explain it, but they're pretty self-explanatory. The one that I want to point out is a permanent residence would mean that where somebody lives, abides, lodges, or resides for 14 or more consecutive days. Other definitions, if you have any questions, pretty much self-explanatory. Park school, daycare center, elderly housing. One of them, it's not self-explanatory, is elderly, and this is only for this particular bylaw, so don't take any offense. It means anybody over 55 years of age. You're getting close. Getting close.
Get into the tables, old man.
That's the young side.
Ralph Walz, only me.
So, what I wanted to point out...
You'll be there someday, so behave yourself.
What I wanted to point out over the last week and a half to two weeks, myself, the town administrator, and Town Council have been reviewing the restrictions in the maps that were included. The original warrant article would have restricted any sex offenders finally classified as a Level 3 from establishing permanent residence within 1,000 feet of any elderly housing facility, school, daycare, center, park, or bus stop. Based upon preparation of the maps detailing where the school bus stops are located, the distance requirement for the school bus stops only have to be adjusted to balance applicable legal standards, keeping in mind that we're trying to enhance public safety at the same time. So, in order to better meet those needs, we had to reduce it from 1,000 feet to 250 feet. We looked at other distances, and it still covered a significant portion of the town, which Town Council believes would be unconstitutional if once it goes to the AG's office. So, the original proposal with the 1,000 feet for both the facilities and the bus stops covered a significant portion of the town. There would only be approximately 5% of available north-reading land where a Level 3 sex offender could reside. So, when we looked at the 250-foot buffer for just the school bus stops and keeping the facilities at 1,000 feet, there would be approximately 18, little over 18% of north-reading available land. So, Town Council believes that, you know, that is more reasonable, and certainly the AG's office could rule against us, but believe that this would be our best bet to have this bylaw pass the requirements of the applicable legal standards. This is a little difficult to see, but this is, this is the 1,000-foot for both the school bus stops and the residents, or the parcels in the residencies. So, if you look, everything that's shaded is where a sex offender would not be able to live, and the white areas would be available areas. And you can see down towards the southwest part of town, that's Concord Street, that's on industrial, so that would essentially eliminate that area as well. The next map...
Chief, that first map, is that including the 250?
This is the 1,000-foot for everything. I wanted to show the comparison of why we came to adjusting the bus stops from 1,000 feet to 200.
Okay, thank you.
And so, this is the map where it's 1,000 feet for the parcels, for all the facilities listed in the bylaws, but it's with the restricted 250 feet for the school bus stops.
Michael, Chief, the thing that, I don't know how it would impact, but you take today's map and you take the school bus stops, you produce this map. And my experience as a member of the school committee is, on an annual basis, the school bus stops change, not necessarily over, from one year to the next, but over a period of time, as the population moves around, the bus stops change. So, you have a sex offender living clear today, and tomorrow, the school committee votes the school business manager, whoever's bringing the bus stops, says, "Now, the bus stop's going to be over here, and it's now it's too close." Does that mean that the school department is now restricted to where they put bus stops?
No, I don't know how they come about establishing the bus stops, it wouldn't restrict them from doing that at all. As we go further, are there exceptions to this residency requirement? And essentially, if a sex offender establishes residency...
Before.
Beforehand, and a daycare center could open up, you know, close by too, and it's up to them, you know, to essentially do their vetting on where they want to establish the location. Part of this bylaw as well is, we have to annually review the maps. So, essentially, if a new daycare center moves in and a sex offender was not living in that area, that would be, we would update the map and they would be restricted from there. School bus stops change every year, like you said. And part of the requirement for the bylaw in this past muster at the AG's office is that we would have to update it annually. And so, this could change.
Just as the bus stops change, would we be taking upon ourselves as an administration to inform if there's a Level 3 sex offender living in a neighborhood, which is basically grandfathered at this point when the bus stops move, that would the administration here communicate with the school department? The school department then inform parents at the bus stop that's a Level 3 sex offender within the 250-foot range?
I don't know what, what I could tell you is, from our standpoint, I do notify the schools on any Level 3 sex offender that moves into town. They are notified, and their internal communications, I'm not sure how they communicate with the parents. So, essentially, they are notified. And I'm notified before a sex offender moves in typically, 10 days prior to them, or if they are released from custody within two days of them moving into town.
Mr. Chairman?
At least that's what the law requires.
Yeah, I just think it's important that the communication is there, the school department will certainly be more cognizant of it as we institute this bylaw, you know, that on an annual basis, they revisit that, and if they're changing the bus stops, they're forced to change it because of proximity of students, you know, that at least the parents whose kids are eligible to go to their bus stop are notified, so, I know that's up to them, but...
Yeah, it'll be a school policy. And as you know, we publicly disseminate Level 3 sex offenders' information. So, we do that on our website here at Town Hall, the Police Department, through our social media. So, word does get out, you know, so people are at least aware of who is living in their community. Yes.
Chief, if you, on that, that's the 250, right?
Correct.
Okay. The white areas, excluding Concord Street, because I realize that's industrial. But if I look to the eastern portion there along, just beneath, is that, no, to the right, yeah, right there. Does that mean there's no bus stops in that area? Or is that just, do you just take, is it a numerical thing versus an actual physical?
It's a, it's a 250-foot buffer from the intersection of where the bus stop is.
Okay.
That's what took this process so long. Because of the way the bus stops were, so essentially, what, I'm not sure, based upon the data that was given to the Applied Geographics from the schools, it appears that there are no bus stops there.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a point of clarification, the map in front of you reflects the buffer zones of 1,000 feet from any of the facilities identified in the bylaw, which includes schools, elderly housing units, and parks.
Daycare.
Daycare facilities. And 250 feet from the bus stops. So, the shaded area could be any one of those categories in question.
So, in the school bus stops, sometimes they stop in front of housing, residential access.
Got you.
How, I have a description of how this was actually, if you'd like to hear how it was actually come about. So, in determining how much land area was available, after eliminating the areas restricted due to their proximity to parks, playgrounds, schools, elderly housing, school bus stops, Applied Geographics developed the percentages of available land, which you saw earlier. And essentially, what they did was, because it was, originally what they did was, you just sort of buffer around the address of the school bus stops, but because the school does not have intersections, and that's the only way Applied Geographics could actually do it. So, what they did was, they took wherever the bus stop was, and they essentially did it from where the intersection was, and went 250 feet from there.
You mean to the closest intersection with the bus stop?
It's hard to explain what, but essentially, it was in front of 5 Main Street.
Right.
They didn't go to Park and Main Street where it's number 7, 7. What they did was, they took that intersection, went 250 feet from there, which took them so much time. So, originally, when we came before you on the 15th, it was just from the intersection, it was pretty much blanked the whole time.
I got you.
And we couldn't, we could not, couldn't figure out where exactly the bus stops were. So, it took them a little bit more time, because they pinpointed directly on the address.
What is, excuse me, what's the success rate as far as getting these things through the Attorney General's office? Has it been tested? How many communities?
It has been tested.
How many communities have implemented this type of...
There's only a handful, from what we know, it's under 10 throughout the commonwealth. So, based upon the conversation with Town Council, they believe that this is not overly broad, and that this would pass muster at the AG's office. Now, the AG's office may come in and say that particularly the school bus stops are overly restrictive, and then we would have to adjust our, the footage of the bus stops or eliminate them completely. But we felt at least leaving them at a 250 feet is a better, for us, a better opportunity to enhance public safety than just doing the parcels of the facilities.
No, I don't disagree, I've just...
So, in this map too, we're going to color code it a little bit different, because you can't really see the legend, and what essentially we're going to be, there's going to be two colors. Places you can live and places you can't live.
Yeah.
For town meeting purposes, and we're working on that now.
Good.
To get that coming.
I just want to go by example to help me understand this map a little bit better. Looking at this white spot here, that means somebody can live there, right?
Correct.
Okay.
If it's a house.
And, I mean, I just know there's a bus stop right there, I'm just trying to get a visual on that, so... Yeah, now, that's, because that's 250 feet from this stop.
Correct.
Which is right there. And this, these houses here, I assume those are houses, okay? They're 250 feet away from, I believe there is a stop actually right here, so they are... Am I reading that right?
Yeah.
It just seems...
I have to get a little bit closer with you. I'm not sure, we can point to it.
Oh, okay, okay. This is the western part of town, okay? So, I know there's a bus stop right here. All right, so these houses here are livable.
Extra dotes.
Whereas this one, these are not, because they're closed. Whereas this one, these are not, because they're closed, correct?
Livable, well.
Well, they can reside there, they can reside there, so.
Correct.
Because, because it's white, okay? All right, but I just don't know what happens in here. I guess I'm just trying.
They can't live there. Anything that's shaded.
I know that.
They're restricted.
Fine, just wanted to get a better understanding. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding what the chief is proposing here? So there's, there's a level of risk that the AG will turn this down, but far less than what was originally proposed.
Well, you went from 5% to almost 20%. Correct. And according to Town Council, they, they believe that this would, this is gonna pass at the AG's office, and that's why we're here before you, you know, certainly would like the 1,000-foot buffer, but it just is overly restrictive and most likely be deemed unconstitutional.
So the, the AG can only approve or disapprove of the town meeting action, so they can't adjust it. So we'd have to come back again if we got, with the modi, we'd have to modify and present it in another town meeting.
They could, they could come in and strike the, the school bus stops. So they can come in and say that the school bus stops make it overly restrictive, and they could strike that out, according to what Town Council talked to us about.
No, that was my question.
Certainly, they will be there that evening to, to answer those questions. That was my understanding, that, that they could come back and make suggestions on not a change of what the, you know, because you would have to go back to town. But if there was just a, you know, an item they wanted struck, then, you know, then you would have to go back to town.
You still have to go back to town, and that was my question.
The, according to what they told me, you would not. If they just struck out a sentence.
If you strike, you're why would you have to, if you're adding, you would have to.
Right. If you're not changing or adding, you would have, you would, you would not have to go back. But certainly you can ask Town Council that evening.
You say, if, so if they struck or took out the bus stops from, from this, then it would be approved by the Attorney General?
No, no. If, if they so choose to strike.
Right.
The bus stops out, and they said that this would be approved, what this struck out, then, you know, that's what we would have. We would have 1,000-foot buffer around everything, but the school bus stops would not be included.
Okay.
Town administrators, that.
That's my understanding, yes. It's, it is severable, that if a portion of it is deemed not to be able to be approved, the remaining, remainder of it, from my understanding from the discussion with Town Council, is that it could be approved, and it would be, presuming agreement.
So we can wind up with no feet to the bus stops?
Well, right, but at least you could end up with something, but right now, we have nothing.
Right.
I, I think that's the point you're making here, is that, you know, we're making, we're putting forth a proposal here, which is trailblazing, because there's only been, you know, less than a dozen communities that have done it so far, and we're proposing something which is very restrictive and good for the community, but if something was gonna be struck down, it probably would be the bus stop radius, unless they changed it on the other thousands of 750 or something like that, but we would still have something in place potentially, even if they severed a portion of it, approved the rest of it.
That's our understanding.
So that's, that's a good start.
Mr. Prisco.
I, I really appreciate all the effort you've put in this, because I think it is a wonderful step we're taking for our community. My question is somewhat related, just to clarify case for myself. Are we required, not required, or are we not allowed to notify our neighbors when they have a level three or a level two living in their neighborhood?
Meaning, we, I do, we do not, we, you're talking about specifically, no, we cannot.
You cannot?
No. So essentially, it has to be disseminated to the public.
To the public overall, but not, not, not a neighborhood?
Correct.
And that's by state law, they won't allow us to do that?
Essentially, if you're singling somebody out, it'll be essentially a violation of constitutional rights, correct?
So then, then how, how do you do that? Just put it in the paper as a?
Put it in the newspaper, we put it on our Facebook page, we put it in the Town Hall, the library, post office, police department, the town website. We've done as much as we can on our public, on the public end of it.
So that includes the address and everything, where they're living?
Correct.
Okay. Because I've had some residents contact me and that, and say, why wasn't I contacted by the town, letting me know that someone's living in my neighborhood? So that clarifies why we.
I get contacted all the time, and we explain to them what our, what we can and can't do, and, you know, they understand the most frustrating, but understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it just level three that's posted?
Correct. Any, any level twos after July 1st of 2013 are also going to be publicly disseminated. There was this case law that was, would not allow us to.
Aren't going to be that, but have not yet.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Mr. Eales.
Could they amend it to 100 feet or 150 feet, or they would just go?
Well, I think it would be difficult. You're talking about the Attorney General's office?
Yes.
It would be difficult without having a visual. They wouldn't know if that would make a difference or not.
Right. But they would go, but they sever it in its entirety?
Well, you don't know what they're gonna do.
No, I, I understand that.
Based upon what the Town Council recommends and what we've seen in other communities, we believe this is, this, this is.
A good shot.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that we're on pretty good ground right now. So essentially, this, this is in a nutshell what, what it would prohibit, after, you know, a motion is made to reduce the 1,000 feet in the school bus stops to 250, make it unlawful for a level three sex offender to reside within 1,000 feet, elderly housing facility, school, daycare center park, all within 250 feet of any school bus stop. There are exceptions, which we talked about. If, if they've already established a permanent residence, if the elderly housing facility daycare bus stop was established after the level three sex offender has established his permanent residence, if, you know, in particular, they can't prohibit him from being somewhere where he exercises vote, voting rights, attending any religious services. And as I discussed before, this, number four, we don't have any of these facilities in town, but if we did, talks about jails, prisons, juvenile facilities, or public or private facilities to care for the treatment of mentally ill, that would also, we would not be able to exclude them from there. And also, if the level three is a minor, which is under 18 years old. And those are just the penalties.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to wait, I move to recommend Article 19.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Fodey. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, thank you.
Super job.
What else do we have that we haven't?
We're just, if we don't mind, we'll continue on through here, that, excuse me, one second.
I haven't even been looking at these, let's see.
Article 19.
Article 19, we just did there, right? So a motion by me, recommend.
Yes.
Okay.
Fodey.
Yes.
It would be easier, we could just go through based on the motions that were in the packet, because that reflected the items for which there had not been action taken by the selectmen.
All right.
Perhaps that's the most expeditious way to.
Steve, you wanna take the lead then?
I'll just, I'll match up the presentation with where we're at.
First, what do you want to start with, Article 4? What do you want to? Okay, Mr. Chair, okay, so Article 4, are we gonna be appropriating money to stabilization or not?
No, the recommendation is to pass over.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to pass over Article 4.
Do we hear a second?
Recommend passing over.
Second. Second by Mr. Fodey. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? Next.
Pass over. Okay. Now, trust funds, Article 5, trust funds to other post-employment benefits. Pass over.
Recommendation to pass over.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend passing over Article 5.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Prisco. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Article 6, operating budget.
At this point, it's been an item that continues to develop. We had targeted, it would be $75,000 for transfer for legal services, plus $2,500 for police department GIS services. I believe it will finalize those transfers at the meeting this coming Monday evening. There may be an adjustment with regard to the legal services budget.
Okay.
We could hold on action until that evening.
We'll wait.
That's the recommendation.
So recommendation will be at town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I move to make recommendation at town meeting on Article 6.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Prisco. Any discussion? Basically, the $35,000 that was requested additional, will have some further information, or?
That's correct. It's anticipated that would be the only change, and again, that would, is anticipated to come from reason appropriate.
Okay.
That was not necessarily discussed and open.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next.
Article 8, which relates to the renovation of the, I'm sorry, Selectman O'Leary, that relates to the potential renovation of room 14. I know that there was some discussion with regard to the, what the board's desire was with regard to this. Mr. Chairman, you and I have had some conversation, and I've tried to have some deliberation as well with regard to, to this. I know that it's the board's desire to discuss the long-term use, future potential options for the Town Hall at the strategic planning meeting on October 29th, but at the same time, there's a concern, and I heard it loud and clear in the last meeting, that this setup is certainly challenging. So what I would recommend is, I think that we can probably, within existing resources in the budget, identify a way to correct the issue of the table without necessarily being beholden to a table custom fit to this room, and would be committed to working with DPW to make sure that that happens from within an existing appropriation, to, to address the issues with regard to the table. I think that that would address the concerns that were identified by the board members, would still give us the flexibility to make a, to have a strategic discussion after the town meeting, but certainly I'm open to additional feedback from the board members.
And I, I just comment that, you know, I had made the suggestion of going over and having meetings over at the high school and the distance learning lab, and after looking closely at the lab, it's not really suitable for the way we have a meeting anyway. So I, in support of the town administrator's suggestion this evening, that we look for a simple solution currently for the table array, we live with the toggle thermostat and the air conditioning, which, in my opinion, has never been a real problem anyway. And we, maybe if we want, put this whole thing in the cap and request, and see where that ends up.
Appropriate money for sweaters and wool socks and, you know, maybe a fan or two.
If you don't think the distance learning lab is a right format for us to conduct our meetings, then obviously this is the best investment. We definitely need to do something. It certainly is a difficult way for us to, to host these meetings, so. Are we gonna, it's not gonna include our guests, chairs and stuff for the guests, it's just gonna be?
Yeah, my, my proposal, my intention to address the concerns I heard in the last meeting would be to address the table setup and potentially the chairs that are up here as well, which I know is a challenge.
Well, then with that said, I'd, I'd actually rather let CIP take it, and let them look at it overall, and just address the room all at once, rather than piecemeal.
Well, wouldn't they need a proposal to be put forth for their consideration?
So, so basically, what's at the table here is what do we do here with this article? And based on what I'm hearing, and what you just said, is we're gonna pass it over, so that's all we need to decide this evening.
Correct.
That's what I'm recommending.
And we'll hold on any additional work until it goes through that process.
Well, that's just my opinion. I mean, the rest of the board can weigh in, huh?
I agree.
Well, I, I have ideas too, but as you say, right now, we're gonna pass over, we can discuss that further. I mean, I, I know things can be adjusted here just with what we have, and I don't think we need to spend the money, but the point here is whether to pass over or not. I'm all for that.
Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend passing over Article 8.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Article 10, appropriation and special act, map 14, parcel 148. This is the J.T. Berry property.
We're gonna hold off our recommendation until.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend a town meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. Any discussion?
Um, yes. I thought we already voted to recommend Article 9. No, we didn't. Okay, I must have the wrong.
Article 9 has been recommended, Article 10 has not.
Okay. Oh, we're on 10? I'm, my apologies.
Yep.
All in favor?
This is J.T. Berry, Mike.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm on the wrong article.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, Article 12, appropriate funds for real estate marketing consultant for J.T. Berry property. I would assume same thing, move to recommend a town meeting?
Um.
Do we have, we don't have any figures yet.
Well, we, we do, because I've done some research on this. And the way it looks like so far is that if we obtain a commercial real estate company to go out and take the effort to sell the property for us at some point, it wouldn't be a fee, it would be a negotiated percentage that we would have to, so wouldn't be any cost upfront?
Bless you.
So we weren't, bless you. So I'm not sure.
I'd recommend that we make a decision at town meeting, give ourselves a little more time.
To, to the point, I, it's a.
We, we, yeah, we're, we're gonna make a recommendation at town meeting as to whether or not, what, how much acquisition appropriation and stuff there. We're holding off on that recommendation until town meeting.
I think that the.
When we get the package together.
I think the item that's been identified is that for the purpose it's identified, we may not need a separate funding source to achieve this, but that's something that we can work out from Monday evening.
Right. But I did look into the appraisal, and I'm, I think that falls.
That'll probably go under acquisition.
Yeah, okay. That's good.
What do we add on that, though?
It's no, no, less than 10, no more than 20, for that size parcel. Now that we're taking the three acres out, maybe just a smidge, but it's.
So, Mr. Chairman, Article 12, I move to recommend, make recommendation at town meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yule. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? Next.
The board has taken action on item 16 and 18 already.
We did. Oh, we're gonna move to, okay, Article 16, did we make the motion?
Yes.
Uh, 19, we did not. 16, this is on, this is on the, was that, I think Mr. Fodey made that?
Yes.
And who seconded it?
You're right, we did.
Do you remember who seconded it?
Jeff.
Jeff, okay.
Yes.
And that was unanimous. 5-0, and that was to recommend a pass over.
Done.
Article 18, sex offender registry. I made the motion, and who seconded that on the?
I did.
It was Mr. Fodey, yeah. And that was unanimous, 5-0.
Yeah.
Article 19, we did. Article 20, file special legislation, swamp one right of way.
I'm sorry.
Article 20?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that we, Steve, I don't think we did Article 19.
We did not do Article 19.
We did 18.
Recommend if I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We did, we did 19, we didn't do 18, I thought.
No, this is the personal wireless facility.
Oh, I got them all.
I'm sorry, and I gotta, because I did it down.
They got renumbered.
I got them renumbered, okay.
All right, on this one here, move to Article 19, amend zoning bylaws, personal wireless service facility. What was that again, Michael? That was.
That was a CPC article.
CPC.
CPC article, that's correct.
And they're recommending it, and they came and presented it to us?
They did. It's to comply with SEC regulations.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 19.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. Further discussion?
18.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Sorry, stupid question. Who's doing Nineteen? Oh, CPC's doing Nineteen, right?
Right.
Yep. Now, we're up to the Article Twenty, right? File special legislation, Swan Pond Road right of way. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article Twenty.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule.
Okay.
Discussion, Mr. Frisco.
I apologize for making us go backwards, but could somebody just give me like a three-minute overview of what this is about again? I apologize.
There's some land up on Swan Pond Road. We want to accept it so that we can finish the road, get state funds for fixing roads, but a portion of this is under the Care, Custody, and Control of Conservation Commission.
So, we have to get a special act of legislation and remove it.
So, we're gonna take it out. Take it out, put it on the general government, and then we can include Swan Pond Road right of way as a, as a road, count towards our mileage, if I recall correctly.
Yes, that's correct. That's how it was originally proposed, and of course, it was identified that the road was not carved out as a road, even though it's being used as a road. So, regardless of the issue of accepting it and otherwise, it certainly should be accurately reflect the fact that it is used as a road, both by the residents in the back as well as public safety accessing to and from.
Okay, so...
So, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous?
Article Twenty-two, citizen petition, authorized naming of the new middle school. And that's going to be, Mr. Lee contacted me and contacted the town administrator, and it is the intention of the petitioners to move to pass over. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move to support passing over Article Twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? And that's it. Very good. We're scheduled to meet at six o'clock on town meeting evening. Is that one hour or enough, based on?
There's a number of unfinished items.
Mr. Chairman, I digress. I had a little piece of paper here. Article Two, prior year bills, do we have any?
We intentionally did not suggest recommendation for this evening's meeting because, in the event something comes in after the meeting, we want to be sure to have accurate information. We don't expect anything at this point.
So, right now, we've already got it as recommended town meeting, I think.
You do, that's correct.
Okay. So, we already have that. Can I see what part you have? These previous votes? Four?
Bill Siskin?
Yep, thank you.
And next item on our agenda is, I don't think it's gonna be a long discussion, discussing municipal water agreement. Can you just bring the board up? The data, any communication with?
Sure. So, as a result of the board's last meeting, I did send a letter to the town of Andover, addressed to the town manager, that very clearly outlined the discussion of the board, the board's intentions with regard to a variety of items, including looking to see both short and long-term proposals, and to correct the issue of the overpayment for the July bill, which will be corrected when the August bill is paid this week. The Board of Selectmen in Andover received that letter and had a discussion of that letter at their meeting last Monday night, and the town manager contacted me and stated that he did not have any firm details for discussion, but that he would, was asked by his Board of Selectmen in North Andover to contact me, to meet with me, to discuss the terms of an agreement. I relayed to the town manager that I would need to consult with the Board of Selectmen before I certainly could go and, and meet with him, and that certainly I was not in a position to be able to agree to anything, because obviously, it would require approval of the majority of the Board of Selectmen, but that I would advise the Board of Selectmen that that was what was brought to, to my attention, that they're requesting, the town manager's requesting to meet with me to discuss the terms of an agreement. I think that we have outlined our position with regard to this matter very clearly in a letter. I don't know that there's any harm in a meeting, but certainly want to have that discussion with the board before agreeing to.
Just a little further update. Jeff Yule called me on the evening of the Andover's last Board of Selectmen's meeting, and said, "You can watch the meeting live, they stream it on a website, andover.tv.org, I think, or dot com."
I think it's, I think it's org.
It may be org. So, I spent my Monday evening attending the Andover town meeting in Cognito.
It's the Monday night football?
Board of Selectmen's meeting in Cognito. But I did get a sense of a few things, and, you know, one is that clearly, Dan, and I can't pronounce his last name, the Chair, and the town administrator fully engaged. Alex Viscoli, who was the Chair and was meeting, has met here with Greg Baddecombe and Sean Delaney, was a little bit more up to speed on what was going on. The other members, you know, I'm sorry, we're, you know, we're informed, but not totally into the overall issue. They did discuss the issue of us not paying what they had raised the rate to in March, and it was discussed in how several members, which were not the most informed members, based on, you know, my judgment, had raised the issue, well, how can we get them to pay? And the discussion went to liens, but you can't put a lien, we don't have property in Andover. One selectman actually suggested shutting the water off, but that never gained any traction, it was just kind of glossed right over. And then they asked Buzz to communicate directly with Michael Gilberto, no selectmen involved, and see if they could come to some resolution. They did discuss the following. One is, can they, would they be interested in supplying all our water? And the response to that was, and I think I put some notes in an email to everybody just so you knew what I had heard, was that they'd have to make some improvements to their infrastructure, but several of the board members, I think cynically felt that we were just using it to leverage MWRA without fully knowing how MWRA works and how you engage in it. So, they kind of discounted it altogether. And then they get, which really surprised me, they said, "Well, because we had suggested a five-year contract, well, we'll work on a five-year contract." And basically, at a significantly higher rate per hundred cubic feet, basically using the numbers that were close to what was proposed back for the same proposal they made in March, which I think was three fifty per hundred cubic feet. So, that's where things stand. That particular meeting, if you want to watch it, may be posted now to view. It wasn't right the day after the meeting, I checked, and it wasn't. But previous discussions, their meetings are posted on that TV website and can be viewed, if you're interested. They've been attending our meetings in the same manner, so they have some sense, and I think it's a good thing, they have some sense of the feeling of the entire board rather than the couple of people that have met directly, the Chairs and TAs. So, that's where that stands, but we'll see what unfolds next associated with Buzz meeting with...
Yeah, I'm certainly not opposed to Mike working, you know, with Buzzing. I get that.
Happy to receive whatever they have to propose.
We're gonna send Mr. Gilberto to go meet with Town Administrator Andover without, we're gonna give him some guidance?
No, I don't think we have to repeat much. I think he's got a pretty good handle on where we stand, but be my guest.
Well, we have a good handle on what they, we know where we are, we know where they are, so, you know, it's time for us to, I think, make a decision.
Well, I think it's important for the two administrators and the manager to, to get a feel for, with each other, to get a feel for where they think their respective boards may be at, is there room for compromise and how much, and let them engage in that type of discussion, get a sense of it, and then report back to us, and we'll see. And obviously, where they're at, I don't find that to be acceptable, but...
Yeah, do I?
Yeah, so, but I think we expressed that. I think, I think you'll let her appropriately outline our concerns.
Just one other point. What I found interesting was during their discussion at the last meeting, I heard nothing about concerns of us going away. They just talked about the fact that we weren't paying what they demanded us to pay beginning May first, and that their proposal now would be a five-year contract period. And I think, you know, part of the issue which we discussed in the past was that they're in the process, and I believe it based on what I think I interpreted the discussion, they hadn't hired anyone to do this yet, is to go out and do this study, and to come up with, you know, a tiered rate structure or something. They, they did discuss, which wasn't directly related to us, that they are supplying water to Merrimack College in North Andover.
Right.
And I think...
Without an agreement.
But I think, basically, they're paying the residential rate.
So, they're getting a better deal than us, too?
Yeah, right.
But we don't know what rate they're paying at this point.
Well, my guess is, my guess is that everybody's been paying the residential rate, so if they don't have an agreement...
Yeah, I'm not convinced on that.
Well, fine, and you may be right. I'm just saying, my guess would be that they're paying the residential rate.
And, Mr. Chairman, I mean, you were present when we had the conversation with the representative of Andover. We put the question directly to them, is there anybody institutional or otherwise who's paying a rate other than residential? And they told us, no, there was not, so. Either that's, either that is the case, or it's not the case.
Well, the reason why it heightened, I'm heightened by it, and I watched the, the meeting as well, is that this agreement that they, this non-agreement with the water goes back to nineteen forty. So, it's with the intermunicipal water agreement, that's how they were able to do it, and they were able to do it with the Merrimack, Merrimack College, which is a nonprofit organization. So, it, it, they did not know about this, they did not know about this not having an agreement with them until two, two meetings ago, not the last meeting, the meeting before, they found out that they didn't have an agreement. So, I don't, what conjured up in my thoughts there was that, well, they didn't know they had an agreement, but they may not be sure that they even know what the rates are that they're paying, because it goes back to nineteen forty, and there is no documentation to support...
Other than their billing.
Yeah, right, exactly. They're saying they don't know what they're billing, what they're paying, because based on, the bill has to say what, what the cost per hundred cubic feet is. I would agree with you, but when you had that conversation with them, I don't think that they were aware, well, they were not aware that the Board of Selectmen, the Water Department might know, might have known, but the Board of Selectmen did not know at that point that they didn't have an agreement with North Andover. So, at that point, they did not know.
You seem to have some information that was not, I didn't hear that unless I tuned in too late of that meeting.
No, I...
He said it was two meetings ago.
Yeah, I'd say it was two meetings ago. I, 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 I say two meetings ago, and the reason for that is that they're having a discussion with Merrimack College on other issues.
Yes.
And, and that, and that brought up the issue with the water, and that's how they found out. It was, from what I understand, a lawyer, and I didn't watch that meeting, but I understand a lawyer brought it to their, their attention in the conversation. So, they didn't, at that point, when they spoke with the two of you, all right, they might, they were not aware of that, that, that agreement, or non-agreement. Now, I have to say that I think Alex, Selectman Alex Viscoli, who suggested that, and really emphasized that it was important that it really be a one-on-one meeting between the...
That's correct.
Between the two TAs. And, and my interpretation of that, watching the meeting, it was, it was a good thing to observe and watch, but you can see that both boards, you can see why both boards are far apart, because they don't know things that maybe we know, and we don't know some things that they're trying, trying to do, or the reasoning behind what they're trying to do. And by funneling it through the two TAs, they would be sitting down in a reasonable environment and talking things out, so that, that's how I interpret, regardless of what we suggest for our TA to discuss with them. It'll just be a one-on-one and a more level conversation. So, I thought it was a very, very good suggestion in that regard. I mean, I know we discussed it actually three, three meetings ago, we, I think, we were thinking about doing that anyway, but so, I, I think that'll, that'll work, but as I said to Mike in my discussion with him, he does, he must have clear direction from us, and then hopefully, we can, we can come up with some type of compromise.
Well, in reading this board, it seems to me that based on previous discussions, that we'd be willing to sign a five-year agreement and pay the residential rate, worst-case, pay the residential rate with no minimums.
I agree with that.
And the signs are increased, we...
Same as residential rates.
And it seems like, my guess is that every large user, including Merrimack College, is most likely paying the residential rate.
They have one rate.
And we should be treated the same.
There's an hour.
Yeah. And I think that's, and with respect to us being the user, clearly, we're supporting a larger portion of their water overhead, because they do not maintain the water mains within North Reading, they do not read the water meters, and they do not send out the Their water superintendent also said to them during this meeting, if I heard it right, that the cost of producing a hundred cubic feet of water was two dollars per hundred cubic feet.
I think it was just under.
Oh, okay.
Just under.
Just corrected.
Just under.
Just under.
That's what I, that's in my notes.
So, a lot of questions to...
So, the cost of, the cost of producing a hundred cubic feet of water may be just under two dollars, when, when you're talking about, but I guess the bigger question is, what's the cost to produce the additional amount that's supplied to us, which is not even, not two dollars, not under two dollars, because their, their, their operating costs are already covered. So, it's less? Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Well, you don't...
We're bonus babies.
Yeah, I agree with you. I guess, I guess... The rate of return on our water is a lot more than the rate of return on their own. Yeah, there, here's a question that I have, and I was hoping I'd get an explanation listening to the meeting, is that they, they haven't explained their three dollar and fifty cent rate. They're not explaining it. it. It does unfortunately appear to me to be arbitrary.
No, it's a penalty.
Well...
It's a penalty.
Absolutely.
So their cost of production is just under $2. They're charging their residents, what, $3.12 now, or $3.10? $3.10, you know, so they're building up their reserves, obviously. And paying expenses that they've had exposures.
It should be at $2.95.
So... But, you know, what they should do is go back and recalculate if they lose a big customer, you know, exponentially. What would their cost of production be? Would their cost of production go up, down, or stay the same?
Well, the cost of production is not going to go down much.
But the cost of producing and delivering without a large customer, a large user, which really invariably has no overhead costs associated with it, would mean...
Their rate will go up.
Their rate would go up. And that's what you quantify. What are we really worth to them? And, you know, that's what they should be looking at and calculating. I'm sure they have. And maybe we should ask them what that is, you know? If and when we go away, what's the effect on your cost of production?
Well, you know, it's interesting, because I don't know what percentage of their water we use.
I've heard numbers of 12 and 20%.
Yeah, I heard the same thing. And you're between 12 and 20.
So does that equate to their increase in cost, the 12 to 20% increase in cost to the residents? No? I'm not a water guy, so...
Really, the way I look at it is...
You have to know the total volume.
We provide $1.4 million of the revenue. Out of that, $200,000 of its cover's expenses, I'd be surprised. But you're talking $1.2 million towards their bottom line.
No, I don't believe that.
Okay. But the thing is, you know, I think we need to engage with some of the town administrator and town manager up there, engage in that type of conversation, you know? Take us out of the equation, what's your cost? And then, you know, let's see if we can work with them to, as I said before, wean them off of us, and work with them over a period of time in order to get to an amicable agreement. Again, Andover has been very helpful towards us for the last 22 years or so, whatever it's been, 22, 24 years. And we've been paying for it, no doubt about it. We paid for the infrastructure, we're paying a premium rate. But... And we haven't bellyache too much over it. We have talked about it over the years, but we know that we're paying more than the residential rate, but it wasn't extraordinarily more than the residential rates. And what they proposed here is fire in excess and basically a penalty, you know, for an anticipated exit by us, should we decide to go that route. And we haven't made that determination, we haven't made that commitment, we haven't made any... We'd have to go to town meeting and get an appropriation in order to make that kind of investment. So that hasn't taken place yet. We've had lots of discussions, but we haven't pulled the trigger on it yet. And all they're doing, in my mind, is pushing us more quickly to make that decision. So... And I think it's unfair what they've proposed, and it's certainly contrary to what we agreed to to pay last March or April, so... Which was their proposal, not ours.
Yeah. And I think it's also important to remember that... And I didn't pick this up in the conversation during the meeting, that we're not looking to discontinue the relationship. We still want to have a relationship with them as far as water is concerned. We weren't looking at just after year five, that's it. I think we wanted to have another resource for water, not only MWRA, and not only our own water, but Andover's water. Am I correct?
Well, as Mr. Fodi has clearly spelled out, right, it's an issue of serving our community with adequate water at a fair price. So it all depends on the price structure.
Right.
And we even went back to them and said, "Well, if you're willing to make a proposal supplying us all of the water, we'd be happy to entertain that, too." Because everything is basically, you know, potentially in place. The capital cost and the calendar time, right, for them to do that is far shorter than MWRA at this point. I don't know about the cost numbers, but time-wise, you know, based on what we think about their facility, is they could probably step up and do that sooner, right? There's an advantage, however, to having our system connected to MWRA, connected to Andover, because now we have all these communities with backup water sources. We wean ourselves off of the wells, which between the DEP and the Ipswich River watershed people would be extremely happy, because now we're not only drawing water out, but we're supplying water into the basin, which is, from their perspective, has to be a good thing, not a bad thing.
It's severely stressed.
Yep.
And there's another big picture view of this with Andover as well. We've talked about a wastewater solution through great Lawrence River District, and we need to go through Andover. And there's another revenue source in the future for them, and it's a win for them and a win for us. So, you know, I don't think we should flush our relationship down the toilet over this one issue, but we certainly need to work on it.
[laughing]
So...
But it's important. It's a big picture perspective, and I think it's a win for both the communities if we try to find a way to negotiate these things in the best interest of both parties.
Mr. Fodi?
Yeah, you know, Jeff brings up a good point. I'm not advocating that we discontinue any relationship we have with Andover or going to another entity for water. When I'm advocating for us, that we find the best deal for the residents of this town. And I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to refuse to agree to subsidize rate pays in another community on the backs of our rate pays. I'm just not going to do it.
Okay. Do you have enough information?
Yep.
Yes.
Enough sensitive words for what it is?
I'm sure.
All right, let's move on. We still have a couple of other writers. Mr. Prisco, you have the floor here.
For?
J.T. Berry. Is there anything you want to...
Oh, just that I will say that we've received the term sheet, which I've distributed to the board and town council to review. Over the next three or four days, we'll go through that and be prepared on Monday, the 6th, prior to town meeting, to hopefully come to a vote to accept the term sheet. I am going to take back, based on some of our conversation tonight in executive session, back to D.C.A., share that with them in one particular paragraph. Hopefully, we can get that taken care of before we meet on the 6th. But other than that, things are moving forward, and looking forward to Tommy.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody?
Can I just add that I really do appreciate all the effort the state has put into making sure that we get this term sheet and provide us the best deal possible to acquire this property. They really have been wonderful to work with, a very professional organization, very transparent, and with great willingness to support us along the way. So I really do appreciate everything they've done. Thank you.
Okay. Town Administrator, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the M.A.P.C. council meeting two weeks ago. The council overwhelmingly approved the assessment increase, which will result in an increase of our assessment of $2,684.70. I anticipate that the increase can be absorbed through the additional utility new growth that was certified by the state. A large group of town employees, as well as the town moderator, met at the High School Performing Arts Center on September 24th to review the setup of the room and develop a plan for the October town meeting this coming Monday. I attached a copy of a briefing sheet to the report, and I would encourage the members to review it, just to familiarize themselves with how, at this point, we believe the meeting will flow and how we'll use the space going into Monday night's meeting. It is all subject to change at this point in time, but we believe we have largely identified how we can best utilize the room for the town meeting. But would certainly welcome any feedback offline that any members might have, or any concerns that members might have.
Of course.
Board of Health administered 298...
Just a quick question regarding the facility. Will all the technology be operational, the projector and the sound system?
The projector is operational. The sound system is operational, although I'm told that at one point there was an issue with regard to its use within the past week or two. But it has been functional, was functional the day that we had the dedication of the building, and it was functional for a presentation made, I believe, a week before that as well. So I am expecting that the sound system will be fully functional. Again, the projector is functional as well. We are looking to confirm the connectivity between the stage and the projector for laptop usage, but we've developed a tentative workaround in the event that connection doesn't work. But we intend to use the projector for purposes of showing the slides.
Okay. I had to leave that meeting a little early, and there were still some things up in the air. The couple of things that I noted was, the screen is down in front of the stage, and as I was leaving, it appeared that everyone was going back up on the stage.
Yes. That is... It was for exploratory purposes only.
So the one thing I think we learned about the projector is that its main focal point is that front screen. The image can be shrunk a little bit, and it looks like it could project a clear image on the back of the stage. But if you lowered the screen down to a level where, you know, it was above people's heads or right at people's heads, you couldn't focus an image on the screen. I don't know if that got resolved or not, or what the plan is there.
At this point, the plan is to use the screen at the location that it is currently set at, to use the projector projecting on the screen, and to limit those on the stage to the town moderator and the town clerk, with the selectmen and the finance committee being set up at tables that are in the pit in the front row.
So we went back to that.
Yes, we are.
As I was leaving, they were leaving that.
Maestro, you're going to be in the...
Can I try a moment with me?
Certainly. So that is the intention.
The pit is in operation, so you won't be rising out of the pit.
One more question, and not that we're probably going to need it, but do we have an overflow rope a bit, if necessary? Will that continuity be...
At the old high school.
Consulting with the town clerk, I'll certainly check back with her, but I believe it was her opinion that with the 600-plus seats in the room, that that was not going to be necessary based on their projected attendance.
That's fine. Not that I think we're going to need it, but, I mean, it seems like all the cafeteria and the media room and the distance lawn and lap kind of all connect. And I just wanted to make sure if we, God, for some reason, ever needed it.
I don't think we've generated that much interest right now.
No, we haven't, no.
Those people that were really interested in the high school that did the tour on Saturday.
That's all.
Mr. Yul.
Just a quick question. Did I hear you say that they could shrink the picture on the...
Only a small percentage.
Oh, okay. Not enough to be over our heads, is what you said.
No, the problem is that the screen actually is attached at the top, and as it comes down and unrolls from the bottom. And the top of the screen is three or four feet of black, maybe even more than that. Right? So it's not like they can put the image up higher, right? So you can adjust the screen height, so you can have people up on the stage, sitting, and have the screen above it, but then the projector doesn't work.
No, I understand. But I thought I heard you say they could make it smaller.
They can make it smaller by maybe 15, 20%.
There are increments, and then you can't shrink it any further.
It's the optics of that projector that they have up there. It's limited to what they can do. It's been designed to work with the front screen and to project something in the back, right? Period.
Okay. Board of Health?
Board of Health administered 298 influenza vaccines at the clinic held at the town hall on September 24th. Came in just under the wire, because I believe we had 300 doses in our possession. So a very good turnout, and we were able to accommodate everybody. Believe that there's a second flu clinic that has been scheduled for in the month of October, but I don't have the date right in front of me. I know it is posted out here in the town hall. Full up on a discussion that I know started over the summer, just to keep the board informed, the health department, the police department, and myself will be developing a strategy for management of the coyote population here in town. I know that there have been concerns that have come up in a variety of different areas. And with the season opening in mid-October, I wanted to advise the board that we'll be putting out some media advisory for the community to advise folks as to what the management plan is within the constraints of the existing laws, with the idea, again, of trying to protect the public from a growing population. Continue to evaluate regional animal control. It seems that interested communities, as well as the town, are not yet in a position to apply for grant funding this fall, but we, I think, are all in agreement, the communities that are interested, to continue the discussions with the proposal to implement some potential changes in FY 2016. And I continue to talk with the animal control officers, the health director, and the police chief with regard to that. And just a note, once the October town meeting has been completed, it's my intention to work on and develop, for the board's considerations, new or updated policies related to vehicle and cellular phone use by employees. I know this has been an item that was discussed and has been discussed for some time. The goal of policies would be to subject to approval by the board to establish some uniformity in the administration of town-owned vehicles and phones, particularly cell phones, as well as any potential program for reimbursements or allowances or otherwise. So just to let the board know that that's not falling off the radar, but it's something that I intend to take up, along with the human resources director and the finance director, between October and December of this year. And I believe that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary, you in the whole business?
We haven't had a meeting since the ribbon cutting at the high school, but I'll tell you, what a show they put on. And it really was a day we all were very proud of being a participant in and be there and experience. And I thought that the speakers, including yourself, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Cabrano, and of course Chuck Tarucci, and Jerry Vannecia, and the superintendent, and the representative from the state, and State Representative, State Senator, did a fantastic job of summarizing everything that had taken place in order to bring that to fruition. And it was a proud moment, and hundreds and hundreds of people at town came in, and lots of comments in relation to the wow factor, how people feel pretty good about how the dollars have been spent and the end results so far of the high school. Of course, they got an awful lot of comments about what happened in the middle school. There's not much left standing there. And the deal was supposed to be delivered this weekend. You'll see a year from now, another ribbon cutting. But it was terrific to be a party to it way back when, to the ribbon cutting the other day. Very proud of our community, and a great thing to participate in. The other thing is, I just want to urge people to fill up the seats in the new auditorium, or the Performing Arts Center auditorium, on Monday night for town meeting.
It's a perfect opportunity.
To come and see. If you haven't come through the school, come to town meeting and take a look. I think you'd be favorably impressed. Maybe Mr. Prisco's wish for an overflow crowd will come to fruition.
Wouldn't that be a nice problem to have to deal with?
Yeah, it'd be a nice problem to have. On that, I'll say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Yul.
Dinner on the schools and the town meeting for everyone to come to it, if only to see the new entertainment arts center, is that what we call it?
Performance Arts Center.
Performance Arts Center. That would be really nice in taking the town meeting. Also, as you know, I ran the half marathon. It was an easy day, but I wasn't the only one that did that. We had quite a good representation from North Reading. We had about four individuals do the 5K, and about nine or eight do the half marathon. And it was a hot day, and it was very tough. And to anyone listening, please feel free to contribute and donate for the fund for the archaeological showcase that we're going to hopefully have in the library. Private funds are great, and they help. Now, unfortunately, I was... I kind of... My day got kind of messed up. I wasn't able to attend the veterans' dinner, and I'm sorry that I missed that. I don't know if anybody here had a chance to go or not. But to Sue Magna and to the veterans, I want to thank you for your service, and I'm sorry that I had to cancel out and not... not attend. However, I did have a good excuse. I was given an opportunity to go to see Derek Jeter's last game. So I went, and I enjoyed the game, and it was a lucky day, because I have here a Major League baseball from that day. So I thought that was pretty cool. I was able to get it, you know, I got, so. Derek Jeter, is that his ball? He didn't hit it. But it'll be a collector's idol. I'm going to case it and so on and do that. I thought that was pretty cool. Anyway, other than that, come to town meeting. Thank you.
By the way, you're wearing your Yankee stripes there tonight.
Yes.
Not to mention the fact that Mr. Yul, unless you want to admit to being a Mets fan, that's okay.
Mr. Prisco?
Coming for me tonight, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Foye?
Just a couple of things. I attended the final farmer's market this past Wednesday, and I just want to say how thoroughly impressed I was at the organization the LUC put together. It was really, it was really quite interesting. They did a great job, a lot of great vendors, even that late into the venue, you know, with the barbecues being over, they still did a good job. Were able to get people to attend still, and I spoke to a couple of the vendors who actually told me that they had a great year this year with it and would definitely be back next year, so I'm glad I finally got the opportunity to go.
I'd like to echo that, too. I've gone several times during the summer. It's a great venue and...
Yeah, I got to say, the LUC did a great job. And I know it's something that they just started this year, but they had a very good, successful first year, so.
I'm glad to hear that, you know, that my wife and I went through it a couple of times when we were down at the park. She's gone on her own a couple of times. I was a little concerned that when the recreation department shut down, that they'd be in trouble, but I was glad to hear. Build a reputation and...
Yeah, they had a pretty good crowd.
It was great, and I will tell you, like I said, I spoke to a couple of vendors who, and it was great just to see, first of all, the vendors know each other probably from different venues and different farmer's market and all that, but the way they all kind of help each other, and if, you know, there was, I noticed two Prorus vendors there. One didn't have any, and they made sure they sent it to the other one. So it was really, you know, I wish I'd probably gone sooner in the year and spent some more time on that, but I'm glad I got to go to one, and will definitely commit to doing it more often next year. Speaking of LUC, the golf tournament is this Sunday at Hillview. Plenty of room for golfers and sponsors, so if you're interested, please...
I've got a handicap of 300, but...
And finally, the last thing I want to mention is, the Youth Services has their mentoring program every year. It starts tomorrow, so any high school student who's interested in working with younger students throughout the town, it's a great, it's a great program that Amy Wlickwitz puts on. Contact her. My daughter did it last year, is doing it again this year. And, you know, it's as much fun for the person actually doing the mentoring as the student receiving it, so I highly recommend anybody who has some time to get involved, do so, and you can use it as your volunteer hours, too, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. I just want to mention, if it wasn't mentioned this evening, the Apple Festival, which was extremely well-run. It went on from nine o'clock, I think it was.
Ten to three.
Ten to three. And, you know, it was a good turnout. I got there at 1:00 after the high school event, and there was still a lot of programs going on, and my wife said it was, was there for the whole duration, or the short period of time she came up to the school, said that it was well-attended and well-organized, too, so.
Yes.
I'm not sure exactly who was responsible for putting that together, but they deserve a pat on the back.
I think Ginny Mills is. It's a super event.
For the high school, you know, it was just, it was a wonderful day, and a great turnout, and all, as Steve mentioned, very, very favorable comments. And I haven't, you know, I didn't get a chance to talk to many of the students. There were a few there helping out the tour and what their impressions are, and I'm not, at my age, not connected to the youth of the community, to find out how the high school students are going, but I'm sure that, I can't believe that they can be unhappy based on, you know, what they've been living with.
All the feedback has been very favorable, with the exception of the cafeteria doors, the entrance and the dressing room.
And I understand that's being corrected.
And the chairs are open, so they can't sit with their friends.
They can't sit with their friends. But, believe it or not, there are actually more seats in that cafeteria than there were in the old high school. So just as many seats, it's just they're not mobile, they can't move the seats around, so that, that's the only issue. And my guess is they'll work through it.
That'll get fixed.
They'll work through it.
Or resolve, right. So at this point, I'll let it...
One more thing. I'm sorry, I do have one more thing. Question about the CPC open position, the appointment. We've been getting resumes in.
I believe we've received two, yes, sir.
Is it the will of the board, are we going to interview them as a board, or am I supposed to do something as the liaison? I'm not too clear on what the direction is.
My understanding is it has to be a joint appointment.
Yes, joint appointment, yeah. We went through this...
I understand that has to be a joint appointment, but is there going to be some due diligence with people contacting, doing some follow-ups with these people, or do we want to just...
Well, I think our website is posted November 1st is the deadline to get the applications in for the CPC vacancy, and then it stated that our intention is to make the appointment sometime in November, so I don't know whether you've had discussions with the chair of the CPC as far as the timeline.
So you're a liaison.
Right. So I'm willing to reach out to everybody that's submitted an application and have a conversation with them and interview them.
I think what should be circulated first is the, all the application resumes.
Karen has been doing that. We've all received them.
Okay. We have?
We have? I don't think we've seen them.
No. Maybe I'm the only one getting them.
Yeah, you may have received them.
I thought we were all getting them. My apologies.
They should be. They just make sure, I think, I also should get a copy of the resumes.
And then, then I would suggest that board members that are interested in talking the individuals, contact them and either have a phone discussion or have coffee with them or whatever, so that you have some background information and feel more comfortable about your vote on the evening that we have the joint meeting.
And again, just urge people, they've got a month. Think about it, and step up to the plate and offer their services.
So I'm glad, I'm happy to hear that, there's been a couple of interested people.
Did you, will he step down immediately, or is he...
Effective September 15th.
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe we can recognize him, because he's put in a lot of time and effort at CPC.
He's put a lot of years in.
He's put a lot of years in CPC. It's a way that we can recognize, you know. Okay. Did you...
I'll sit up to the board shortly.
Sure. That's a volunteer position that he's done for years, and I've heard nothing but great things about it.
It's an elected position.
Well, that's true, that's right.
And he's stepped up and ran, when no one else did.
For many years, so. So if we, you know, if we can do something like that, that would be great.
Okay, we can do that at town meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
Just recognize the fact that, I don't know if he'll be there, but...
It's going to be fact.
Lastly, has everybody signed the letter I wrote?
Yes.
Michael, you have the letter?
I have it.
You signed it, Jeff.
I did, okay. Oh, okay.
My plan is to present that at town meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, which we've communicated to the transcript as well, but the website and the notice previously with regard to the CPC vacancy indicated that it was until May of 2016. That's incorrect. The term goes until May of 2015, until the next election, when the person is obviously able to be a candidate for the position that they were assigned.
Oh, so you don't even have one year.
Yeah, and that's something we've been well aware of, it's just an error in the way that the notice was published.
Is that because his term ended then?
Yeah. That was the cycle he was on.
It may have been, but that...
Yeah, because it wouldn't be otherwise, otherwise you'd have...
No, it would be for an unexpired term.
Yes.
Right, unexpired, you would run until the next annual election.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he would have to...
Oh, and then, then, when he runs, if it's only, it could be only a one year.
That's correct.
Okay, that's right.
The error was, we put 2016, it should have said May 2015, April 2015.
So he gets appointed, and then he runs to fill that seat, well...
But whatever it is, one of the balances.
It could be one year or two years.
15, 16 is going to be one year. You're in 14, 15 now.
I know, but I need to know.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Second.
I'm out.
Go on, favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.